Welcome to the Monday, December 1st, joint meeting of the City Council, School Board, and Planning Commission. We're delighted to have you all here together. I think it's a rare instance to have everyone in one room at one time, so we hope this will be a productive meeting, but thank you all for coming out this evening. I guess we all know each other. I don't know if it's worthwhile to maybe go around the room and have introductions. Would we like to try that, maybe? I think we all pretty much know each other, but why don't we do that anyway? You want to start, Wyatt?
Wyatt Shields, City Manager.
Meredith Connolly.
Abe Snyder.
Dave Brue.
Karen Oliver.
Melissa, Planning Commission.
Rob Meeks. Do you want me to say, like, if I were a tree, what tree I would be?
No, you are a car.
I would be flat.
Andy Rankin.
Albreth Rogers, Planning Commission.
Dave Tarter, Mayor.
Susan Conley, School Board.
Lyndon Hockenberry.
Lyndon Hockenberry, Planning Commission.
John Lawrence, School Board.
Lisa Heiss, Assistant Superintendent.
Michael Kuhlman, School Board.
Karen Sharp, School Board.
Lawrence Webb, School Board.
Justin Castillo, School Board.
Russ Madiskos, Planning Commission.
Tony Jones, School Superintendent.
I Hunter Kempel, Assistant Superintendent.
Tom Horn, Legal Services with the Schools.
Thank you all. Why don't we go ahead and get started with our agenda. The first item is a financial overview from the City Manager. Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. I've got a couple of slides that we want to go over, and I'll say right at the outset that every year when we kick off our budget development process, we're always looking for ways to improve the process. And I think part of what has happened here tonight, of having the Planning Commission here at the table for our budget development planning session, reflects the importance of the capital improvements program, in particular this year, and the Planning Commission's role in reviewing the CIP and making recommendations to the City Council. And we've got a very significant capital plan in our five-year plan, and it presents, I think, probably a lot of the work that we're going to do over the coming six months. Before we get into that, though, I want to provide, just share information about what we're seeing in terms of the economy and revenues that will help define and shape FY '16 as we sort through and prioritize our operating budget needs as well. So we've got a couple of slides on that. Richard LaCondre lost his mother last week, so he is not with us tonight. And if he were here, he'd be presenting, and he'd be presenting numbers provided to him, mostly by Melissa Ryman. And that's what I will be doing, is presenting numbers that Melissa has worked through in her analysis and to help set the stage for budget development. So what we want to try to cover is FY '16 preliminary projections, revenues, and what that means for expenditures if there's no change to tax rates. We'll do a capital funding capacity analysis. We've got lots of capital challenges, lots of needs, but we also have a lot of strength, and we want to talk about that. We want to talk about enrollment growth, which is a big driver on the school side, so I'll turn it over to Tony for that discussion, and then ask Cindy to just do a quick run-through of the major capital projects that are in the CIP and process that we're talking about to gather public input on the vision that we're trying to accomplish with our capital program and how we're going to achieve that capital program. But 2016, one of the key things to get out that we'll talk about in a little bit more detail, overall revenue growth, we're projecting 4% to 5% growth in revenue relative to FY ' '15. And that is slightly ahead of and above the projections that we see in the region. Fairfax County has had this similar meeting, Arlington has, Alexandria have, and our projections are higher than what we're seeing in the region. A lot of that growth, however, is on residential assessed value, and that's a theme that we've seen in the last couple of years, and that continues this year. In terms of expenditures, just to cut right to the chase, with that growth in revenue, we have the FY '15 deficit that we'll need to cover, we'll need to address that. In the '16 budget, we have new debt service coming online, and so what would be left over for other expenditure growth with that revenue growth is in the range of 1.1% growth to 2.4% growth. So let me, that's kind of a quick overview. Let me back up now and just talk about how we get to those numbers. First, statewide, what's going on statewide? We're feeling the effects of sequestration, it's showing up in all of the revenue numbers that the state has and our peers in the region have. Virginia is almost last in the United States of America for economic growth, 0.06% GSP growth, state product growth, in 2013. Guess who is 49th? Maryland. Guess who is 51st? D.C. And so these are cuts to federal spending that are showing up in our local economy. We're giving money back to the Commonwealth of Virginia as they deal with their state budget woes because of this same phenomenon. Our local aid to the Commonwealth is $33,000, and we'll either write them a check or have cuts in the funding that's coming to us. Public education, so far, has been held harmless in the state budget cuts. This is where our revenues come from, 59% from real estate, 6% from personal property, 9% from meals and utility taxes, 5% from sales and use taxes, 5% from B-Pole, and relatively low dependence on state and federal funds for our general government operations. This actually is not that unusual. In our region, 60%, 63% is the norm for reliance on real estate for all the localities in northern Virginia. Assessed value growth in the region, Arlington is projecting 3% overall growth with 6% to 8% growth in the residential, flat, and commercial. Similar story in the other, Alexandria, 2.3%, Fairfax County, 2% to 3% is what they're projecting. We're projecting 4% to 5% growth in real estate assessed value. And that is largely due to the residential sector remaining strong. Commercial market value, we think, will be flat or possibly a slight decline, but new construction is worth about 2% of assessed value growth in of itself. And that's out in the neighborhoods, the houses that you see being built, but it's also the major projects that we have underway in the city. Those will be assessed on January 1st for the construction cost that's been invested in those projects to date. So again, a 4% to 5% assumption right now, working assumption, for assessed value growth. Real estate tax rates in the region, we're right in the middle. We're at the lower end of all the smaller jurisdictions in northern Virginia. Our rate is higher than all the counties at this point. I do add in for the counties, the cost for solid waste pickup and for other taxes that are assessed. Fairfax County notably has special service districts that are for areas right around the city border, so, including like the McLean Community Center, so I've added those as extra taxes. So their real comparable rate is closer to $1.20. Sales taxes, I'll just go through a couple that we have some early first-quarter data on. We had budgeted 5% growth in sales taxes this year with some new development coming online and just historic patterns. What we saw in the first quarter was 0.5% growth, and that's partly because the Good Fortune Grocery Store, which we had projected coming online in the summer, we're very happy that they've opened for Thanksgiving, and if you get a chance to go there, it's a really neat place, and that will help our sales tax. But in terms of our FY '16 budget, we think that it's reasonable to project about a 1% increase over the current year. This is the historic actual patterns. We've been flat for a couple of years once BJ's came online, and so we're projecting pretty modest growth in sales tax revenues. Meals taxes, 3% was our budget in the first quarter, we have 2% growth, so we're going to project somewhere around 2% growth there also. But meals tax is also relatively flat. We've got lots of new restaurants in town that are providing great options for the diners, but there hasn't been a real sharp slope to a curve on meals tax receipts in the city. Personal property, this will be the last one that I talk about. That's largely in in the first quarter, and it came in about $200,000 below budget, but we will still get personal property receipts throughout the year, so we're projecting about 2% growth there as well. And that's what that looks like graphically. So overall, all those other local taxes, we're projecting at about 2% to 3% growth. You add that to the assessed value growth of 4% to 5%, we come up with our overall revenue projections as stated earlier. So if we model the 5% revenue growth, that would produce $4.1 million of additional revenue for 2016. Then we have these uses which need to be dealt with, and that would leave $1.8 million, $1.9 million to handle all other needs for operating budgets in FY '16, or 2.4% growth. If we have 4% revenue growth, the same analysis yields about a 1.1% growth in the revenues that would be available for growth in our budgets. Now, you compare those to historical patterns of revenue growth, our seven-year average for general government is 3%. Schools have been growing at an annual rate of 3.1% over the seven-year horizon, over the five-year horizon, lower than that as we grappled with the recession and budget cuts. But as we recover from the recession, our expenditure growth patterns have increased, 5.1% to 6.7%. So obviously, this is a pretty marked change from what we've seen in the last three years if we're to have a balanced budget without any changes to the tax rates, based on what we're seeing right now. So that's a quick overview of what we're seeing for 2016. I'd be happy to answer any questions or comments on that, and then I'll turn it over to Tony for a discussion on enrollment growth patterns that we're seeing with our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Why don't we go around the room and just see if there are questions going from one direction or the other? Any questions or comments? You don't have to have a question, you don't have to have a comment, but if you do, why don't we start over with Ms. Connolly and just sort of work our way around, if you sent through our questions or comments?
I just have one question, Wyatt. The $1,387,000 operating deficit, can you elaborate on that a little bit? What is that?
Well, when we adopted the budget for FY '15, we used FY '14 surplus funds to fund the budget, and we've also since then made some other minor adjustments to the budget, which also have some recurring expenditures that don't have revenues associated with them. And so that is essentially, it's a deficit that needs to be closed from an operating perspective in '16, because there's no revenue associated with those expenditures.
Mr. Snyder?
Thank you. A couple of questions. You noted that we're giving back to the Commonwealth $33,000. Well, I want to put that in perspective. It would be very helpful for the citizens to know how much money total we're sending to Richmond in terms of the bulk of the sales taxes, income taxes, which all go to Richmond, and other related taxes. So the notion that we're only giving back $33,000, the reality is this community sends millions of dollars to Richmond that we don't get back. So I think it's really helpful for the citizens to understand that in the context of how much we send to the state, how little we get back, and then how much we have to ask of them to provide what in other states and in the other parts of the state get back in terms of the tax revenues they spend. So I think that number would be helpful to put in context, because it's way more than $33,000 we send to Richmond. So that would be a point I would make and ask for development as we go forward. Next, looking at your chart on the real estate tax rates in the region, some time ago, I asked, okay, what's the difference between Arlington County and Falls Church in addition to our size? And the comment came back, and I think you made it, it's really commercial activity. So I saw that we broke down, that we broke out real estate that we didn't, I don't think, broke out residential versus commercial. So I'd like some more data on the commercial versus residential split and what to lead to what our targets need to be to adequately fund the growth in population which we're going to have, one way or the other, and at the same time, maintain some downward pressure on tax rates. So it would be very helpful to develop that particular aspect as well. Thank you.
And just briefly on that, Arlington's sector of their real estate, and it's pure commercial, is about 30%. Ours is 22%. Fairfax Cities, which also is among the lower tax rates in the region, of their real estate, 35% is commercial. And so there is a direct correlation between your commercial ratio and your overall tax rate.
Thank you.
Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I understand, I think, the bigger picture on real estate tax and the growth in those areas, but I am also curious in whatever theories or explanations you might have on what you characterize as the flattening of the collections in those other areas. Surely you must have some notion on why that is happening, and so I'll look forward to that explanation.
Well, I think we need to look more into it, but when you see it region-wide, our numbers are just tracking the region almost to a T. And so when you see that slowdown in sales tax receipts and meals tax receipts and personal property, the consumer is behaving differently this year than they did two years ago. And what we believe is, I mean, the causal relationship is that people feel uncertain about the federal government, their job security, their contracts with the federal government, and that's influencing their retail, or their consumer behavior. That's the theory. We've been waiting to see how that, how sequestration is going to show up in our revenue picture. It does not appear right now to be a sharp decrease in revenues for any of the local governments in the region, but certainly it shows up as a flattening, and our economic recovery is slower. We're lagging the rest of the country.
Just a, I don't have this one, just a quick follow-up. So if in fact what you're telling us is that consumerism is declining as a result of many factors here, then I think that there's some good news for us with respect to the kinds of facilities we're planning to build in the city in the future.
Mr. Brue?
Mr. Shields, a couple of points that I wanted some clarification on. You had given us the, I believe you mentioned for new development, that's about $30 to $60 million. Do you happen to know what percentage of the revenue growth that captures?
Well, that would generate, that's the equivalent of about 2% of assessed value. Another way of looking at it, roughly is worth about 2 cents on the tax rate.
If we can also get a breakdown of how much of that is residential versus commercial development, because I anticipate some of that forecast is from some of the larger commercial projects that are coming online. The reason why I mention that as being important is that that trend could slow down significantly. We've seen rapid growth, but it could be one of those sectors that, you know, may take a while to come back through again, so getting a better understanding of where that $30 to $60 million is coming from would be helpful.
And the reason there's such a widespread is that is typically the last thing the assessor addresses, and so I've given, you know, we've got some room there for that number, obviously, to get utilized.
And then I take it the key takeaway, at least for this portion of this discussion, is that we're looking at, if we do attempt to keep the tax rate flat, expenditures overall would need to not grow more than either 1.1% or 2.4%.
That's correct.
But built into that is an assumption that we're looking at residential growth that's supporting that, those numbers. So it'd be helpful, and I think we've done this before, where we've tried to calculate, even at those numbers, what the average homeowner would likely see in an increase, assuming that we keep the rate unchanged. So if we can, I don't know if you have that number now, or can you give that to us?
Yeah, I don't have that off the top of my head, but we would do the analysis of what the median homeowner's tax bill change would be with those assessed values.
I think it's easier to, I think, think about, you know, sort of what the bottom line is for our median home, or I think we did a couple of different price points. Thank you.
I have more of a request for the next presentation of this data. We have the comparative chart of the real estate tax rates in the region. Could we have to go along with that, the comparative data for the median home price in those districts? I'm just sort of interested in what the overall, the median homeowner is paying in taxes and how that compares. I'm not sure of the best way to present it, but it seems to me that without the value of the homes, we don't really know that.
Mr. Nug?
Thank you. Also on slide number eight that Ms. Albreth just referred to, we don't indicate our new stormwater fee, and I know some of the other jurisdictions also have had on stormwater fees, so I would just ask that we somehow assess that and estimate what it equivalents, equivalent, what it equals in terms of the tax rate. And my, Mr. Brue's question is similar to mine on slides 16 and 17. If I read this the right way, we would spend, what we spent in the last year, plus $873,000 by the 4% number, or plus 1.8% of the 5% number, but both those assume that essentially corporate tax payments by residential customers are going to go up, you know, a bit bit in order to accommodate that, in order to accomplish that. Last question, those numbers assume that we maintain the undesignated fund balance policy, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just one note on the stormwater fee. Fairfax County is 2.5 cents on the tax rate, for example, and so on that chart, that 2.5 cents is not included in Fairfax's rate. Since it's not in our tax rate, I pulled it out of Fairfax County's rate as well.
Is our number, what would our number be?
If I recall correctly, when we were adopting, it was about 3 cents on the tax rate.
Similar to the difference in split in Arlington of commercial to residential property and the revenue coming from that, I'd be interested to see how Falls Church split between single-family homes and multifamily residential. It seems like Arlington has a lot more large apartment buildings and things like that that probably generate a lot of tax revenues with less of a cost than single-family homes might, and I don't know if there's a way to look at that, since that's something we're looking at with future development, seeing whether or not we should be adding more for those kinds of housing units.
They're definitely different. Arlington's is 16% of their AV is in apartments, 5% of ours is, so there's a pretty big difference. Alexandria's is also very high relative to ours.
On slide eight, I might get back to that. On the extra taxes that are noted for other jurisdictions, are those type of taxes that City of Falls Church could also do, could also charge, or are they specific to those areas, such as swimming pools, which we don't have anything of?
They could be considered.
We could, you know, we could.
Did you have anything?
Are assessments up to date?
Meaning for new construction?
No, property assessments.
How much of what you mean?
Are property assessments moving along? I know they're not totally tied to market, but in some ways they are. Are assessments?
Well, they're directly tied to market, and they are, you know, our ratio of sales to assessed value is, I think, the highest in Virginia, because those records are kept. And I think that's right. We're a small jurisdiction, and so, but our assessor does a fantastic job.
Because I'm asking that because I do.
The other key thing is to capture all the new construction, because that's a real question of tax equity and fairness, and I think we're very good at that.
Because I know we did a total redoing of the assessments.
Yes.
About 10 years ago or so, because they had ball and house ratio.
My only question is about the $840,000 in new debt service. I'm just curious, what does that include, and how much of that is assumed for Mount Daniel?
That is, that is Mount Daniel, and when we talk about our capacity, we're going to talk a little bit about our debt service trajectory. And we also have made investments in the pension fund, which is going to produce a dividend, which will lower debt service costs, but that really comes online in FY '17, but that will show up in those charts that we'll go over in just a moment as well.
Okay.
I wonder if you have from previous years, the first quarter statistics, and whether those first quarters were similarly slow as is the first quarter this year?
Well, in our quarterly financial reports, we always compare to the quarterly results from last year, and so that informs these projections, as well as the prior three years in terms of comparing first quarter results.
So the overall projection then is based on the full year and its anticipated growth?
Well, what we do with our projections is we look at the past and see where that points us. We look at our year-to-date data, because that's the most up-to-date data, see where that's trending, and then we consider other peculiarities that we ought to capture, like a major new thing about to happen that will come online, like transient occupancy. We forecast a big uptick in transient occupancy for '15, knowing that a major new hotel was opening up. So those are the three things that we typically consider.
That's all for me. Thank you.
Again, Mr. Shields, with respect to slide 17, could you break down the operating deficit for FY '15 by city expenditures and school expenditures in terms of percentages?
Well, I don't think we really can do that, because it wasn't cast that way. But at the, we had a significant surplus for FY '14, and going through all the budget options, the decision was made to deploy that into FY '15, and I think that was done in consideration of the fact that we had a series of positive things happening. The sale of land was generated $4.2 million, sale of the water system, which was going to help our capital reserves. So those all went into, factored in that decision, but it was not broken down by the deficits with schools or general government. It was just to close the overall gap without raising increases for '15, without raising taxes for '15.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments or questions? Okay. With that, why don't we move on to the next item on our agenda, the enrollment projections. Mr. Shields?
It is me.
Thank you.
We actually have two handouts for you tonight, and we're going to start with the first one, which is the white sheet that says monthly membership. And there's so much data, it's hard to put these on a slide, or it's tony-tony and you can't read the slides, so. And once again, when you look at our overall numbers, we are continuing to grow as a school division. We are thrilled this year that our growth rate is around 1.4% this year instead of being around 6%. So our growth rate this year was more similar to what Fairfax County and Arlington have seen over the last couple of years. When you look at the chart, what you're looking at are four columns, and on the far left, you'll see where it's September 30th, 2013. So that's where we were with our grade levels, on every grade level, last year, and that's the official count date for us with Virginia. And that's the official count date for us with Virginia Department of Education. Over on the third column is, you'll see where the number is this year. So you can look and see, did a grade level grow? And when you look at whether or not a grade level grew, you really want to look at kindergarten last year, first grade this year, and it gives you an idea of what that growth rate looked like. The one thing that saved us this year on our growth was kindergarten. And kindergarten is probably the most difficult grade for us to predict, because we don't have a cohort of children where we can then factor in what we believe that enrollment projection will be. It's very much driven by birth rate, who moves into the city, who's already here, and you don't know that literally until the day they show up. We start pre-enrollment in the spring, we get about fifty percent of our enrollment, but a vast majority of our families that are enrolling do enroll in the summer. And we're trying to be aggressive as we can to get our pre-enrollment better every year. But you'll notice the kindergarten number this year was one-hundred-and-fifty-nine students. And that is considerably less. Now, I can say next year, we already know, as we're running our Weldon Cooper numbers, that's expected to spike up again to one-eighty and start that climb and that trend again. And they're running all of those numbers for us. Down on the very bottom gives you the overall, the grand total students. The one number that a lot of people don't understand is there's a number in brackets that's underneath the student number that says itinerants. And those are actually students that live in our city, they're students that we must provide services for, but many of these students need services beyond what the, what our public school system can provide. And so we have students who are outplaced in special needs for a variety of different reasons, and so they are part of the budgeting process. Traditionally, we have not included those numbers of students when we talk about per student amount. But there is actually often a much greater cost with an itinerant student than there is a student who's actually in our seat every day. So this just gives you the overall picture of what we look like right now. In Falls Church, we always usually start fairly large. We, our numbers will go down before winter break, we have families that will move overseas. We spike again every spring, and then by the end of the year, we usually end on a lower number for those families that are moving overseas, especially those families that are going to systems that start in August and in May. So that's the overall picture of growth. And you will see as we get closer to the budget process, what our projections are going to be like over the next fifteen to twenty years. And again, we're working with Weldon Cooper right now to make sure what we bring you is one-hundred-and-ten percent accurate to the best of our ability. The next, the next chart is the one that we've, we've been running this for a couple of years, and just to show you the work that really goes into trying to understand where our enrollment growth, where it's actually coming from inside the city, the type of units and the type of dwellings. When you look at the twenty-fifteen column, if you see green, it means that that building or that, that unit actually had a spike. If it's yellow, it was flat, and if it's red, it means that the numbers went down from the number of students who came from those units. One of the interesting, and I'm not going to call it a trend, because it's never a trend until we see it over a couple of years. But one thing that we did see this year is our numbers at Oakwood actually declined by thirty, which, when you look over, you know, back into nineteen eighty-nine, that we haven't seen that. But we did see a shift to both Pearson and Northgate. So it's just as though the family shifted units, we didn't actually have a big change. And this is a double-sided, and so on the back side, where it has the new room mixed use, this is again just showing you the work that we're doing, working very closely with Wyatt and his staff, Rick Goff and the Economic Development Office, to really look at what are the range of ratios that are coming from studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, and really drilling down so that we understand where the children are coming from and how some of the decisions we're making in the city impact school enrollment. And the other thing that we noticed this year that is, is not something that we've seen before, is if you look at the single-family detached, which is the last section, actually went down in our single-family homes. And that's the first time we've seen that. And our, again, multi-use students went up, single-family went down. But what we are doing is another layer of analysis this year, and it just takes a little time. We've gone through, we're looking at every address that was no longer in the system this year, so those homes that we lost, and are they on the market? Did they have seniors and the families are still in them? And we're running that analysis right now. So when we get ready to go into the budget, we will know a little bit more about where those, those homes went, because it was unusual for us to see that this year. But we're trying to be very detail-oriented in understanding where our student enrollment's coming from, when we look at all the types of dwellings that we have in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we go around the room, but this side, maybe the other side, with questions or comments? Is there anyone on that side of the room that has anything for Ms. Jones? Okay. All right. Actually, I have a question or two for you. So looking at your, your numbers for kindergarten, at least as I do it, it looks like there's maybe even a twenty percent decline in kindergarten from last year to this year. Is that something that has significance, or is it just kind of a random blip?
And that, I wish I could answer that with a degree of accuracy. What I can say is that Northern Virginia, we all saw the same trend. When we get together with our Region Four meeting, all of us had lower kindergarten, and it was a low birth rate year. And I think what happened with this number is perhaps that single-family home, and again, I won't know until we really do the analysis, do we have a lot of those pre-K kiddos sitting in our single-family homes that haven't come to school yet? And that, that's the part we're trying to look at right now.
Also, I saw an article, I imagine you did as well, I think from a Weldon article, about declining enrollment in general in Virginia. Any comments on that article?
Right. It does, does not have an impact on Northern Virginia. What they're saying in Virginia, and I'm seeing with all of my colleagues, is rural Virginia are losing students and we are gaining, and we are expected to continue to gain students in Northern Virginia. And there was an excellent article that came out just a few weeks ago that we can circulate for you that talks about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd say, based on conversation I had a couple of years ago with the State Council of Higher Education in Virginia, their concern at that point was, we don't have enough kids to fill college seats. And I said, really? Because we have more kids every year, there's a real divide in our state. And if you're in Northern Virginia, Newport News area or Richmond, you're seeing more kids. Everywhere else in the state, they're seeing fewer and fewer kids, because the jobs aren't there and families are moving here and to other places, so.
Okay. Other comments, maybe going around the table? Mr. Mace?
I ask this question every year, and so just for consistency. So how, in a, in an area like ours, where you have the military, the State Department, these transient entities, how do you forecast for an Arab Spring event or some of the other things that are happening? How do you, how do you try to build that into this?
We use the best modeling that we can. First of all, it's the birth rate with Weldon Cooper. That tells us how many children are born in actual Falls Church city. That's one point in time. And then we go in and we look at our cohorts of children, and we know what we predict the growth rate to be, and that's also working with Weldon Cooper and also looking at the trends over the past several years. And, you know, traditionally, and we call that the Kimball model, so we take both of those and put both of those in there together. The last three years, we've actually worked with the Economic Development Office and also included that component. And that's probably been one of the most challenging, because, for instance, Northgate's a great example, and hit it on the head. We, I think, estimated there would be twenty or twenty-two from Rick's office, and that's exactly, I think, when you look on here, we ended up with twenty on the actual count date. So it's taking all of those different components and then putting them together to get the best model possible. And I will say, we've, our accuracy has been excellent over the last couple of years. This kindergarten number is probably the first one we've seen that we just, was just a miss from all of those different components.
Yeah, but I think at the end of the day, we don't try to forecast for those kind of Arab Spring events. We just do the best when they happen to us. When we forecast, or kids in our schools, we forecast for the kids who are going to live here and be here through that year. And when we have those spikes with state private families who are brought back or whatever, we just do the best that we can do.
Sure, sure. I'm just curious, because it always shows up in the long-range trend. You know, in other words, if you have, if you have a school, if you have a class of three-hundred kids and ten kids hit from an event that happens, because we have a lot of State Department families, it doesn't necessarily show up as a trend. But it always seems to me that when we look at these numbers, it is showing up as a trend, even though those kids may then go back out in eighteen months, twenty-four months, whatever. I'm just curious how you do it.
And in fact, what we have, have found, and just going back into, you know, what had happened with, I'm thinking the first time with us, it was the bombing in Kenya, Tanzania, that we first had an experience in, in the Arab Spring. There have been some other, other incidents. Those took place, I believe, like in the January, February, March kind of, kind of timeframe. Honestly, the numbers that we use to project, we've used the same data point every year, which is the actual number of students who, you know, are enrolled in student membership on September the thirtieth. Every, every single year. So it's not an average, it's not taking, you know, looking back over a year, it's on that day. It's one data point. And the fact of the matter is, if in fact we had an Arab Spring or some sort of a world event that brought all these students back to, you know, to Falls Church and to the United States during the period of September the thirtieth, that would indeed have an impact on these. But to my knowledge, just thinking back, those really have not. And I, and I think in that particular instance, if, if we knew there was an event that was inflating the number artificially, artificially, we would probably take that into account and maybe adjust for it, or at least asterisk it and put in an explanation, or flag it as an outlier.
So they all went back, in that case? They come in the spring, they all go back? That's your experience?
Not, not always, but if they're here, again, there's, it's the same data point every, every single year.
Well, so I've never seen any of these events, when there have been these big surges.
Yes.
I've never seen one flagged as an outlier. So what I, I just heard you say is you would flag it as an outlier.
Correct.
So if you're not flagging as an outlier, then I can only think that that means that all the kids come.
Yes.
In January and leave in August.
Well, the fact of the matter is, I mean, if you look at the trend, it's increasing. It is always, you know, from one year to the next, I mean, it might have dropped by, you know, a dozen students, you know, one, once or twice over twenty years, but generally speaking, you know, the trend is upward. And some of them may stay here, in fact. Although I do know in the cases of world events, that generally speaking, and this is anecdotal information, I will totally, you know, say that upfront, that a lot of times, you know, when these events happen, you know, families then do relocate elsewhere or either go back overseas or deployed in other, other areas. And we get that from our guidance departments, who are really on the front lines of all of this.
And if they're still here, if they don't leave in August, then we do our census on September thirtieth, which is what we are required to by the state, that's how they then get into our forecasts and into our systems. Regular ongoing students. But I think traditionally, while they've had these spikes, they've not been that huge. More is made of them than is actually the fact in terms of the number of kids.
Mr. Nugget?
Thank you. For my money, the most important number is the Northgate student count, so congratulations for hitting that assessment right on the head, as you said. Size of the units there would suggest that the buildings that we're building now at Lincoln and Rushmark, which are going to be similar in size, will they lead you to project that that point-one-nine number for a student load, rather than the higher number that you see at Pearson Square, where the units are much larger? You are estimating your student populations when those buildings come online? Do you think point-one-nine is fair to estimate?
To be honest, I think it's too early for us. We still have some more work to do. The next layer that we do before going into budget is to take all of the addresses at these key, and it is the new room mixed use that we're really trying to look at for economic development, look at one-bedroom, two-bedroom, the townhouses that are there. So where do these twenty students come from? And then that gives us a tremendous amount of information, putting that with the other new developments.
That's right. There are, of course, a few townhouses that appear at the Northgate that don't show up in Lincoln or Rushmark, the properties.
Okay, great, thanks. Any comments, Ms. Oliver and Mr. Bruce?
Thank you. Ozzy? Perhaps, I hope I'm not asking a naive question here, but I heard you say that previously you had not included itinerants as a budget item, but that you're now doing so.
No. We have never included them, but they are students that we service.
So the naive question is, aren't we like, are we going to do what is an itinerant? I'll do some thought with you. I see here that the, that you're projecting an increase that's proportionally larger than the school population, so the question is, do you see that increasing even more as a percentage of the population needs a service?
The itinerant number increasing? I'm sorry, I'm trying to just clarify my question.
Yeah, so, you know, twenty-fourteen, it was twenty-two students of a total here, and then at the end of October, you're now projecting thirty students, so I'm just wondering where this is going to go, or will it be fifty, one-hundred-and-fifty next year?
Yeah, those are actuals. These are actual numbers of students that are enrolled in our system right now, that we actually provide services for. When you look at the October column, that twenty-four-fifty, those are the students in our building, in our seats every day. That twenty-four-eighty include all of the students who we provide services to as a school division. And that's an actual number. And that, and that number will continue to increase as school population increases.
Okay. Do you have a handle on what that increase might be?
You really don't know that, because it's very driven by the unique needs of students. And I'll give you an example. If we had a student who came in to us and needed some type of special education service that required medical services, for instance, that we just can't provide on a daily and ongoing basis, that student would then go to an outplaced environment or another, we would probably contract with someone in Fairfax County or another setting to provide the service. We still have to pay, they're still our student, and there are itinerant students that are enrolled with us. It's just they need a service that, beyond what we can provide.
So it's a fair question to ask you, whether these, this class of itinerant students is a higher budgetary requirement than a non-itinerant?
Generally, yes.
Okay. Well, I'd like to do some thought with you, either you or the school board on this issue. I'm pretty like, thank you.
Sorry, just wanted to, the, Tony, the single-family detached, the unit number twenty-three-fifty-one, that's remained exactly the same over the last three years?
Sorry, I'm trying to find where you're looking.
The back of the sheet, the single-family detached, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, the number there is exactly, is exactly the same?
I would say that that's where we are as far as our data point is at today. We actually were running, and I was working again with City Office last spring, trying to look at the split lots and the number of houses that are coming online, and we could probably go in and readjust that number again, and need to do that. So thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, thank you.
That'll drive the ratio down?
Should.
Yeah.
Other comments, questions? Mr. Snyder? No? Okay. All right, well, thank you very much.
One question that came to mind, with respect to the drop in the number of kindergarten students this year. I mean, we are coming upon the effects of the recession, which did drive birth rates down somewhat. Any idea how much of it, I mean, I heard the dip was half a million births compared to what had been happening before? Any idea, will this dip for a while and then move back up?
Weldon Cooper's anticipating, even though it was a lower birth rate this year, we should go back up again next year and have around one-eighty, where this year we were at that one-fifty, one-sixty. So they are expecting the trend to go back up.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is Mr. Shields, Capital Projects.
Thank you, Mayor Carter. Wanted to just spend a little bit of time about our current financial capacity to handle capital projects, and we've got a couple of things we want to show on that. One, our current debt, what we have on the books right now, what we have planned, how capital reserves can be part of the solution, economic development part of the solution, and, and just show what our fund balances are. In terms of our current outstanding debt, this is what we have on the books right now. I should say, we will have on the books very soon, but this is general government debt, this is school facility-related debt, and this is Mount Daniel, which we'll issue the bonds for that in just a few weeks. If you break down the, the school debt by facility, again, this is Mount Daniel, but the biggest chunk of debt that we still have out chunk of debt that we still have outstanding is for Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. We have 10 million outstanding for Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, 2.4 million for Jesse Thackeray, just about 1.2 million for the small addition we did to Mount Daniel in 2006, and then this is some 1996 debt for George Mason High School improvements. So that's what we have on the books today. On the general government side, we have just about $4.9 million outstanding for City Hall related improvements, $3.1 million, which is the community center and a portion of the fire station, $3.1 million for other public safety facilities or apparatus, fire station improvements that were made more recently, $1.8 million outstanding for open space acquisition, and $850,000 for transportation related projects that was issued last year. In our adopted CIP, we have $138 million worth of identified capital projects, and that's a big number. 33 million of that is for projects not related to the high school or Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School expansion. We had an Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel about three weeks ago, and they did some economic analysis for us, and roughly they projected that about 50% of the high school could be paid for through economic development on the 10 acres up at the site. And that's in the form of ongoing tax revenue from that site, as well as potentially a portion of the sale of the property or however that deal is structured. And so if you take that 50%, just as one modeling assumption for right now, and we've got a lot more work to do on that, and we'll talk about getting an update on the work of the steering committee later on tonight. But if you model that debt service out, we do, this is, I think, probably the fundamental challenge that we have in our budget adoption over the coming year, is how do we accomplish our identified capital improvement needs in a way that's affordable and achievable? So what this chart shows is this is our existing debt service. The blue base of this line, we have the community center and fire station coming off our books in '22, and then Mary Ellen Henderson, a big step down in 2025. But the red tranche, this is the Mount Daniel issuance that will go to market on in just a few weeks. This is the library that is planned in the CIP. This is the City Hall project in the CIP. There's some miscellaneous projects that are in here. This is Mary Ellen Henderson expansion, and then this is 50% of the cost of the high school, or $50 million if we debt finance that. And so that's a significant challenge. What this represents right now is about 14 cents on the tax rate. What this represents out here is about 32 cents on the tax rates. Now, we do show, we've made the investment in the pension fund, and the intention of that investment is to produce a perpetual dividend which will be used to invest in capital. And so following that strategy, that shaves off, you know, and those dividends will start being payable and really in FY 2017. And so when that comes online, you'll see that Mount Daniel is largely paid for. At any rate, the increase in debt service associated with Mount Daniel is essentially paid for. And then we have what is essentially 2 cents less on the tax rate for our debt service curve. That's one piece of the financial modeling that we need to do in order to make our CIP into something that is, meets the needs of the community, meets the vision of the community, but does so in a way that's achievable and affordable in the end of the day. Couple of strengths that we have, and 2017 is when the economic impact for the major new projects will be felt in our budget. We're projecting a net fiscal impact of 1.36 million for the Harris Teeter project, just under $1 million for the Lincoln project, a total of 2.3 million. So that's after we've taken care of the service costs, after we've taken care of the educational costs for the students generated by those projects. So in theory, this could all be dedicated towards capital projects if that's the choice that we make through our budget development process. Another area of strength in the city is we have adequate fund balance, undesignated fund balance. Our policy target is 17% of expenditures or two months of our expenditures. We drew them down in the recession, we've restored them, and this is probably the quickest way, when people want to buy bonds issued by the City of Falls Church, their confidence in our ability to pay them back, I think is in large part, this is the cliff notes that they look at. Do these guys take their policies seriously, and did they restore fund balance like they said they would? And we did, and that's why we're AAA rated, among other reasons, but it's a strong reason why. We have very strong capital reserves with the sale of the water system, a total of $12.9 million now committed in our capital reserves. 11.3 million of that's water sale proceeds. And the council's budget appropriation of that, 85% of that, or 9.6 million, is for long-term capital needs, 15% is for more immediate capital needs, and that will all get worked through in the CIP development process over the coming months. In addition, the council has committed $1.6 million in FY 15, and at the end of this fiscal year, we'll have $1.6 million in capital reserves that came about just through allocating surpluses from the past two years. We do have one problem, and that is we have significant recurring pay-as-you-go expenditures. This is what we generally need on an annual basis to take care of our schools, take care of our existing facilities, HVAC repairs, or elevator repairs, or typical capital projects that we do pay-as-you-go. In addition, if we're going to realize the benefit of the NVTA funding stream for transportation improvements in the city, there's required $1 million local match for that. These are not in the tax rate, so we could in FY 2016 pay for all these needs through the capital reserves. And that's fine for 2016, but we won't have any of those capital reserves in 2017 and beyond. So that's a recurring pay-as-you-go issue that we need to wrestle with and we need to address over the coming year. So in summary, just two slides in summary on this, we do have very large and significant capital needs. We have an FY 15 deficit that needs to be addressed, and we also, if we're going to accomplish these capital needs, our operating budgets really need to be aligned with our operating revenues. If we don't do that, then we will eat up our capacity, our financial capacity on operating budgets before we've addressed some of these capital needs. So those are the trade-offs that we'll have to wrestle with, with FY 16 budget development. But again, we do enter this from the position of strength with our AAA bond ratings, or AA+ from Moody's. Fund balance is at policy, strong capital reserves, fully funded pensions, not on the VRS side, but on the city's pension plans. And the economic development is really going to pay significant dividends in FY 17, and then we have other projects in the pipeline that will hopefully continue that trend. And all of the rating agencies noted right at the front as the record of very strong financial management by the governing body of the City of Falls Church. And that's a key thing in terms of investor confidence when we do go to market for bonds. So that's a quick summary of our capital capacity. We could either pause here, or we would like to just go through what our major capital projects are and talk about the calendar, and then discuss that process and that calendar.
So to jump right in and keep the process going, I want to talk about three things. The process, that we're looking forward for the next CIP, some project updates, and then we'll turn it back to the financial and close up. So from the process, we have our traditional schedule, and I have that highlighted here. Staff are currently developing submissions that I'll receive next week, and then January 20th, we're scheduled to present this to the Planning Commission. I've had some follow-up conversations with the Chair of the Planning Commission that I know is based on some school board and council discussions, and then internal discussions we've had, to try to enhance that during the Planning Commission process. So in addition to the two public hearings and the two work sessions, we have underdevelopment an idea of a community input session that would be much more engaging in dialogue than just a traditional public hearing. And then, of course, Planning Commission is scheduled to adopt on the 17th, and then it converts over to the council's process for adoption on April 27th, operating and capital budget. Part of the development process that we've been talking about for that enhanced community process, and based on input tonight, then the Chair of the Planning Commission and I, we're going to reconvene to get some ideas to propose to the Planning Commission for their process. But we'd like to do some increased messaging and coordination with the boards and commissions, community agencies like deepest legal women voters, really get the word out, the school's network of emails, enhance the CIP website presence, so it's just not under the budget page, buried in with a PowerPoint, but you can actually see the projects, have a description, and talking to GIS manager to see if we can map it and make it more interactive. And then host, have the Planning Commission host an open house and a public input session early in February. So it'd be after the presentation, and maybe one work session, and then before the final public hearings and adoption, and have a real interactive community process, maybe similar to how we do the small table dialogues and have some input and dialogue staff show and tell of projects, so people could get more hands-on and engaged. So we could have school projects and general government facility projects and transportation and so forth. But along with that, since we know that we don't always get the breadth of all 13,000 citizens in that process when we're paying taxes, try to do some more with online survey, hard copy survey, social media, so we can get the same input. And we've been talking about how you can help people communicate to you all what they're willing to pay, how fast and deep they want the CIP projects going. You know, we've got seven big, all our facilities in a seven-year period. That's a pretty heavy lift versus, you know, a 20-year facility planning horizon. But, you know, do that, say, here's what's in the proposed CIP, what's most important to you, rank your, from number one, most important to 10, so we can aggregate some of that data, and hopefully we can get a bigger spread. And then, of course, do newspaper and emails and social media. So that's sort of the process piece that we wanted to float and get some reactions on. We also could do that sort of open house process during the council's deliberation process if you wanted, after you have received the Planning Commission's recommendation. The next piece is just to give you a quick highlight on some of the key projects that we know are in the adopted CIP, so we're all on the same page. On the 24th of November, council received the City Hall Public Safety Task Force recommendation for the four additional options to City Hall. There are four of them, and they total about $5 million. So that's just a quick graphic. We have the library expansion and renovation project based on what was adopted last year, which was an onsite library project at $8 million in the CIP. So the consultants have gone back and done some additional studies, and the library board's going to meet on this Wednesday to adopt the recommendation that would go into the proposed CIP. But it would be an expansion, this is just one of the options, to the Virginia Avenue side, they have another one that would go over towards the parking side. In all cases, it's designed to go with the adopted CIP budget of $8 million and would increase the library and reconfigure it to make it more efficient. That same consultant has also done some follow-up analysis for doing a parking deck between the library and 313 Park Avenue. The condo association and the air rights owners of this land are willing to entertain a discussion with the city for a shared parking concept. That's estimated at about $3 million and would add 55 new space on that additional deck for library, public, and the whole campus kind of area with Broaddale being down below that. Of course, we have the high school and middle school campus project that's currently underway with the school's space fit study, the TAP ULI, and continuing work of the Joint Steering Committee. And Wyatt, I can pause here if you want to have any update from the Steering Committee.
I'm happy to do that more, Susan.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, the Steering Committee, as you know, is made up of members of the Planning Commission, the school board, the city council, and the Economic Development Authority. We've been meeting most Thursday mornings, if not all Thursday mornings, for the past nine or 10 months. Recently, we've had a test fit done by an architecture and planning firm called RTKL that's done some test fits to see whether the school could fit in a smaller footprint, and whether economic development could be viable on the areas that would be left for economic activity. Both of those test fits have come back positive in the sense that a school can likely fit on a smaller footprint, and in fact, we can have viable commercial activity on the remainder of that parcel. In addition, you've heard the ULI, Urban Land Institute, did a technical assistance panel. Many of you, I remember, have seen at that panel, and they did a great job. Their report is quite lengthy, if you have a chance, you should take a look at it. As some of you may recall, they have proposed the 10 acres or so that could be used for commercial activity, being put up against Hancock Road and Route 7 adjacent to the shopping center with the Giant in it. That is a very preliminary analysis. They spent about a day and a half doing that work, they did a great job at the time they had, but we're not viewing that as kind of the be-all, end-all, but it is some input for us. So, but it was a quite, it was quite a good study. In addition, we've had some discussions with our neighbors, neighboring property owners are important to the viability, the economic development there, including Womata, Virginia Tech, UVA, the folks who own the Giant Shopping Center, Federal Realty, buyer family also have property adjacent. So our neighboring property owners are quite important to the possible development of the site. We've also are in the process now of hiring a consultant to help us with our next steps, which will likely be getting more public input and finding a way forward that involves the community and also comes up with some viable options for us to proceed with. It's going to be a long-term process. It's not something where you're going to see this all resolved, you know, in the next couple of months. It is very detailed and very complicated, and I think to do it right, it's going to take some time, but we're working hard on it, so. That's kind of about all I have. Susan, anything you might want to add to that?
Our next meeting is not this Thursday, but next Thursday, in the basement at City Hall at 7:30 a.m., and we'd love to have you all join us and have a chance to see what we're up to. If you can't do that, Tom Horn does keep minutes for us, and they're posted on both the school website and the city website, available at any time for you to take a look and see what's going on.
Okay, great, thank you. Cindy?
All right. Additional update projects then would be the Parks and Fields. Of course, we have Parks Master Plan, we have several courts under reconstruction. West End Park, if you drive by now, you can see the construction fences up, so that project's underway. And then two key ones that we had talked about during the last CIP process, and in the meantime, Mr. Horn and Mr. Schlitt have been working on that with consultants. So I know from the staff draft CIPs that we'll have synthetic field turf replacement and renovation request in for FY 16 at $450,000, and the track at $160,000. So those will be joint collaborative efforts in, under Parks and Fields. And then under transportation, we continue to work on the issue of dedicated match funding to the new state's money, maximizing those resources. We have a lot of projects underway and a lot planned in the CIP, as you can see up here. And I should note, these are only the general fund projects or match money by general fund into the transportation. So tonight, I wasn't bringing up sewer and stormwater, but that's a whole nother big topic as well. So with that, I turn it back to Mr. Shields.
Well, this is kind of the wrap-up in terms of presentations, but we've talked about CIP being at the forefront of budget development this year, and there's a lot of big decisions that need to be made, but right at the top is the adoption of a CIP that meets the city's vision, is prioritized according to needs, and is achievable. And that's a, you know, it's a tall order. And that's a, you know, it's a tall order with the needs that we have. Other decisions that will be made through this process, determine the use of the $11.3 million in water sale proceeds. How is that money going to be deployed? And it's important that that decision be made. If the decision is to hold it for projects that are, you know, two or three years out, then we can invest those funds and get a higher yield. If the decision is to use them more immediately, then we won't really get any yield on them at all in terms of how we invest them in the meantime. We need to address this pay-as-you-go, recurring pay-as-you-go cost issue that I discussed just a few slides ago. And we have an ongoing issue of trying to fund our school buses and our police cars and our fleet reserve. And so that's on the table for us to wrestle with and try to have a more rational way of fleet replacement. And facilities as well. While we're investing in major renovations or teardowns and rebuilds of our facilities, we also, we've just invested $10 million in TJ. We still need to take care of it, and all of our facilities. And our older facilities are expensive to take care of, and so we need to understand that in our budget-making process as well, so that those facilities are taken care of and we don't have ballooning costs because we're not taking care of routine maintenance. So those are a couple of the big issues that we'll wrestle with. And then, lastly, just the final sum-up, in terms of our FY '16 operating budget growth with no change in our tax rates, we're looking at expenditure growth that would be in the 1.1% to 2.4% growth range. Very large capital improvements program. We are in relatively strong financial condition going into that. Not strong enough for all of this, so we've got a lot of work to do. And I think the end of the presentation is, we need a process for capital improvement planning that has, that engages the public in new ways than we've done in the past, so that the public is, understands or contributes to the vision, and then when it comes time to actually pay for these things and achieve them, the public is well-informed and supports them. And so I think the next point of discussion is just taking a look at our process and making sure that we've got the time and that, you know, we've laid things out in a way that we can be confident that's going to happen.
Okay, great. Why don't we go ahead and go back around the room with any comments or questions? Why don't we start this time with City Council's side? Miss Conley, do you have any comments or questions?
Cindy, on your, you were talking about community engagement piece, and I think that is a great idea to put a lot more focus on CIP on the website. One of the things that I've noticed, and I'm sure other people have as well, is that people don't see some of the things that are happening in the city, the stormwater and the parks and Howard Herman Park. It would be great to be able to have pictures of those things out there so that when we're talking about CIP, we can say, this is what we're doing for you, this is where your taxes are going. I think that is so important for people in the city who don't have kids in the schools who are complaining about taxes going higher, or people who are just concerned about what else is happening in the city. So I think that's great.
That's a good point. And part of the website enhancement, we were thinking about adding the pictures and, you know, we've done some PowerPoints with it, but it's not regularly available. And that's also why you see the stormwater sign out there, you know, by some of the projects, trying to make it more visible, besides it's just backing up traffic when we're doing a traffic signal.
But I think it'd be great to have videos that show those. Every time we're out there in the public, in the news press, everywhere, to be able to focus on and show all the things that tax dollars are paying for, that are benefiting all the citizens in the city.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks a lot. I think it's a very positive thing that we add a vision element. This is a listing of specific projects, and I think Councilmember Conley made a good point that people need to be able to envision where their tax dollars are going. I think that's, that's a great point. But I do look forward to the addition of the vision because I think to some extent we ought to look at what we want this city to look like and feel like and be in 20 to 30 years, and how do we get there? And the CIP is a key part of that, so I look forward to bringing those together. And I do hope for greater, greater focus on the vision. A couple more specific questions. I'm still interested in the costs of renovating for both the City Hall and the library versus purchasing new space under a condo arrangement in the commercial developments that are either on, that are moving forward. I think that'll be very helpful to make sure that the renovation options in both cases is really the best. Second point I'd make is that there are some elements of the City Hall project that simply can't wait, as I understand, that some of it relate to court security. And I think in our CIP discussion, I think we need to understand those things, which we absolutely have to do, that's simply no choice about it, if we're going to maintain a court system here, for example. So I think that's a second point I would make. Third point I would make is, in stepping back from this, how much of this CIP really supports commercial development? How much are we building to simply meet governmental needs, and how much are we building to support the growth of the private sector here? And how are there some additional things that we ought to be doing in looking at the CIP and in prioritizing things that would bring in the kinds of infrastructure, if you will, that would support both greater business retention and business attraction? And one other thing, if Mr. LaCondre were here, he would probably say, "Happy Monday." But the news is not so bad tonight, although it's challenging, but in many ways, we have a lot to be grateful for. Thank you.
Mr. Stitt?
Thanks. I'm glad we're drawing out the, getting the conversation with our citizens. This is probably the first time I've seen a discussion that needs to take place with all of us and with our constituents over the course of the next few months. I can't help but think that even with enumerating the pieces that we need to consider, that there are some other things that haven't been brought up in this conversation yet, but must. For example, the changes to City Hall will necessitate relocation of the farmer's market. I assume you can't have both construction site and a farmer's market occupied the same space at the same time. So there's a cost to that, as well as value to the city, so I think there are these conversations we need to have yet. But I think it's a good start. So thank you.
Mr. Bruck?
Just on that point, because I just got a sinking feeling after Dan Zee mentioned something about the farmer's market. I mean, I think that hopefully it can be scoped in a way that the farmer's market is kept in place. So I just put that request out there for...
Mr. Schlitt and I have already been discussing that.
Great. Yeah.
In the front, in the back, in the front.
Yeah, I mean, there's other examples, I think, about Merrick Field, that there's a lot of construction going on, but they're able to still hold a farmer's market, so hopefully that can be sorted through. I wasn't going to get into that, since you mentioned it. I just wanted to make, make that request that we figure out a way of...
And yours is going to be on your street.
Yeah, that, I'd like to keep it at the location. I mean, especially since what we've done with Dan, it was, it's very disruptive if there's ships and, and moving the farmer's market, especially since we're looking at possible ways of actually improving the market, and so that's, I don't need to get into that now. On the discussion that we had about sort of CIP process and visioning, et cetera, which is that last bullet, so I think that's, is a general, you know, 500-foot level talking point, it's fine. But I, I hope that the discussion starts looking at issues like, well, what are our priorities? What are the costs associated with those priorities and ways of paying for those priorities? Rather than, you know, sort of these loose concepts that we're talking about, like visioning. I just think that we're at the point where we've had lots of discussion about visioning and what we want the city to look like, and we just need to put, you know, a little bit more granularity into what it is that we're talking about, and what are all the various trade-offs and costs associated with it? And then, how are we going to meet some of the demands? I mean, Wyatt talked about some of the mechanisms that we have, and I, and I just think that we need to start putting numbers out there, what the costs are, what it means, what the various trade-offs are, rather than, you know, the 500-foot level discussions that I think we've had numerous times now. And then, two, as part of that, one option that I'd still like to have at least some consideration about is other taxing authorities that we have, such as special taxing districts that go directly towards economic development and improvement. We touched upon that when we were having a discussion about just lighting, but that's, you know, small potato stuff. Taxing districts can be used for a lot larger initiatives, so I'd like to have that discussion. And then, finally, you know, I'll just, it's now time, I think, that we start talking policy issues as well, so I'm happy to do that. And for me, I can just say right off the bat, the CIP is where my focus is going to be, as far as how we're going to meet some of our needs. And I think one of the slides which captures it the best, you know, with sort of not having any, you know, a belt around our operating budgets and thinking the CIP is going to get done with, you know, what we know are absolute priorities and public safety issues, it's just, it's not going to happen. The capacity isn't going to be there. So, you know, that's just, that's just where I come out on the equation, just to put it from and set. And if that's not clear, I'm happy to elaborate. What it is, I mean, exactly.
After this meeting?
Well, it's basically a budgetary operating guide for me, or CIP.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from council? You don't have to make any comments, so if you...
Come on, you want to take a policy position?
I'm going to. Yeah, thanks for that.
Okay. Mr. Duncan?
I'll talk while she thinks. Cindy, doesn't mean that I'm not...
Never stops.
My motto. Cindy, I wanted to ask you on the City Hall project, the total bill would be somewhere under $60 million for all the options that are listed, but the City Hall project, because it's a public safety project, does not have to go referendum, isn't that right?
That's been the determination by the prior city attorney due to public safety and the separation of the projects, parking versus expansion. But our city attorney is here, and I will, on her behalf, tell you that she is reviewing that and confirming it, since she's new to the process.
Okay. I don't want to put you on the spotlight, but that's...
She needs more time for the research, but she's in process.
The library, the $8 million figure there, I'm just interested in how that was arrived at, and if we were to go to referendum on the library project, would the eight and the three go together to make for 11, and would that be more than 10% and therefore in a referendum? Or is the idea that the library is less than the 10%, it wouldn't go to referendum?
Well, eight million, depending on the next adopted budget, you're pretty close to the referendum threshold, but two things on that. The Planning Commission formally recommended in their adopted CIP last year that the library should go to a referendum, so it would have community input on the treasure of the library to the city. And then, the adopted dollar amount was taking an earlier CIP amount, which was in $6,750,000, I believe, and kind of did a ballpark escalation for inflation because it had been three years in the making. And so that's where the planning number of eight million came to, that was in the adopted CIP, to signal support for the library but for renovation and expansion on-site. And I'll defer to the Chair or other Planning Commission members if I didn't capture that correctly.
Exactly right. That's accurate.
So it's the Planning Commission's current position that there would be a referendum on the library, whatever the amount of...
Yes.
Okay. Does the Library Board internal that, know that? What's the status of?
I haven't heard them complaining about it. I totally concur. I think, I think they're pleased that they, that they got some additional funding, or, you know, some additional funding was put in the CIP, and I don't think they object, strongly object to a referendum. I think they can make their case.
In any of the discussion they've had since that, I think they are planning on the referendum because of the message they had received. As to your part about whether the library and the parking would be combined, right now, they're being developed as two separate projects because the one I would propose is more of a public parking that meets the library needs, but not only library needs. And the current design would increase on that about 55 spaces, which even at peak library time, the library patrons and staff wouldn't need.
Okay. If I want to learn more, I'll go to the Library Board meeting on Wednesday, but thanks for that. The, I want to go back to slide number eight again before I lose the floor. And remember that it's not only the amount of tax that we're talking about, but the trajectory of other jurisdictions' tax rates that I think are in the citizens' eyes here. So when we produce our more involved documents, I think it'd be helpful to see, you know, where the city's tax rate has been over the last, say, seven or eight years, where Arlington's has been in that same timeframe, and Fairfax also. I know last spring, we moved heaven and earth to try and keep the rate flat and, you know, maintain the spread between Arlington and Falls Church, only to see Arlington reduce their rate after we had finished our budget by a half a penny. So I think that's an important kind of perceptual data point to have. You may not know it to look at the two of us, but I think Mr. Bruck and I are wearing the same belt, and we were doing a lot of great things, facilities-wise, just terrific things. And I agree with Ms. Conley, most citizens are not fully aware of it, just because it's been a long time since we've been able to build a lot of things in the city, and now we are, and that's great. But that does, I think, create an imperative that we maintain excellence in schools and city services within the operating budget that enables us to keep the tax rate level at least. And so I would just concur with what he said and ask both the management and the superintendent, you know, at what point do you really need, if you're going to budget in a planful way, to have very strong guidance about what you're going to ask your various departments and divisions to consider their budget is going to be next year? I mean, what I don't want to do, if we can at all avoid it, is to get to the last week in April and be hanging over, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars in an 80-plus million-dollar budget. That's not, that's not really a very good way to do business, so you don't have to answer it right now, but I would like to know if it's possible to, you know, take a number out of this meeting that you would use guidance over the next month or six weeks while you're trying to develop your budgets.
So my responsibility, the superintendent will present her school board, her budget to the school board at the first meeting, so she's begun some time ago.
January.
I mean, in January, to develop it.
She really wants it. I missed that in the newspaper.
She'll get guidance from the school board at our meeting next week, and whatever that guidance the school board provides, what she'll use to devise probably a number of options for consideration.
Okay, great, thanks.
Ms. Sullivan, do you have anything?
I just want to come back to, I know Mr. Bruck said it's too fuzzy, but I really think the key phrase that we need to focus on is the shared vision. Because I've heard people say, "Well, of course, we all share the vision of," and I don't actually share that vision. And so I think that we need to be very explicit about that, and we need to make sure that we understand what the community really is thinking, at least those of them that... we understand what the community really is thinking, at least those of them that we can get to speak up. I think that as all communities around us are growing and changing, and there's a lot of pressure on them, we can't assume this is exactly the same city that it was yesterday. And I just, I mean, I'm a numbers person, but I really think at the end of the day that if we don't have that shared vision, you can't create your priorities, you can't really talk about what people are wanting to be to pay for something. It's my slip box, sorry.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens?
Yeah, I'm gonna do just a couple quick comments. I think, kinda taking off my Planning Commissioner's hat, I think I'm in a unique position to most of the people in this room in that I own residential property here, I also own commercial property, and I own a small business here, at least I own half of it. And so, and Mr. Rankin also owns a business here, so I don't know if he owns commercial property. And talking about the commercial value of the CIP, I just wanna say from my business point of view, having good infrastructure is really important to a business. And when we have flooding or we have a collapse of a road because of the storm drain going down, that affects businesses just as well as it does the residential. In fact, it could be much harder. We have a lot of people who don't always want to drive into the city because there's backups on seven, and construction doesn't always help with that. So we really do want good infrastructure, want pedestrian-friendly walkways so people can walk to our businesses. These are really, really important things to us. And we would love to have a city hall where we could go to the Commissioner of Revenue's office and then go to Development Services and not have to either go outside or try to find the magic doorway between the two. Now, I know where the magic doorway is, but that's because I've spent too much time in city halls. But a lot of people, it's very difficult to do that. So that, all those things are really important. To have a real functional, vibrant community with good schools and parks and things that bring the kind of professional people here that come to our business is really, really important to us. And I think, I mean, sadly, we've just kinda fallen down over the last three or four decades in keeping all these things up. So it's not fair. It's all kinda come on us now. We had some very cheap tax rates back in the 90s. I remember wherever year I read in the news press, the tax rate was cut again. And once you start to understand all of the issues we had, and that as a pretty mature city, a lot of our storm drain and sewer went at the same time, so therefore it's all kinda going bad at the same time. Most of our schools were a lot of, built at the same time when we became, so unfortunately, time caught up with us. And so it's unfortunate that we have it going on right now. But these are things that really do need to be fixed. The city hall, if anyone's ever toured the sub-basement that the police have to use, it's shameful. And so there's just lots of things like that, that as a business owner, I'd love to see, you know, I wanna see it fixed, but I know we need to do it in the way that works best for us financially. And I think that's really our job, is when you look at that CIP, how can we pace these things out? And I think it's one of the things that came out of our library discussion last year is, 'cause when they first came to us, they were looking for more like $18 million. And while we see the value of the library, we felt like we need to back this down a little bit, and we need to let the public come in and say, what are they looking for in that library? Because we just have to make sure that we're using our money appropriately. And I, you know, and I also totally understand where Karen's coming from with that shared vision, because we're slowly redoing the comp plan. And as we're redoing it, we are finding some shifts in what people are looking for. And I think 20 years ago, you didn't see people talk about pedestrian-friendly or bike-friendly at all, really. And so it's just, our world has changed, and that's one of the things with our CIP. I think our current CIP is looking both at the infrastructure and facility stuff that we kinda let sit till we were ready to deal with it. And unfortunately, I wish we had spread it out a little bit better. But now we have to deal with it. And the other side of it is getting that shared vision of the city that we want. And as we continue to work through that comp plan, hopefully, we will get more and more input from the public. And I think also our area plans have been places where we've had some really good turnout in our public meetings. And if you look at the area plans we've done so far, I think they really are starting to come together on what people are looking for. And then I think about the area plans, that businesses come to those events as well.
Thank you.
I was just gonna ask if we could have more time. I realize this is a draft calendar, but given the importance and the importance, relative importance of the capital improvement process this year, it surprises me to see the 20th of January to the 17th of February.
Yeah. It's that framework.
Mr. Rankin?
Yeah, I just, I've been through a couple of these, and I learned more each time. One of the challenges for me is, on slide 24 is the one where Wyatt showed debt service and how it would go if we took on 50% of the cost of high schools. I think that it jumps from 14% of the tax rate now to 32. But then the next slide shows how we knock off 2 cents with the investment in retirement funds. And then the slide to that, it mentions the net revenue from the development going down, and it has a note that it doesn't include the proffers for school construction, which I don't know what it is, a couple million bucks. And I don't know if that is factored in on the previous slide that shows the 32 cents knocked out of the 30 cents. And we talk about, we've got $13 million or so in cash that we could use for capital stuff. We've got potential future developments that will have capital contributions for schools as well as net fiscal impact on the tax rate. I just, you know, we sit down and try to figure it out next month. You know, you look at this thing, it's scary. It's like, all right, you're never gonna do that. But, you know, 32%, 32 cents already down to 30 cents. Maybe it's a few more cents if we use that $13 million wisely, get a couple more aristocratic things with a couple million dollars, you know, the Mason Road thing's been on the table, that's a couple million bucks in capital right there. So I'm wondering when we actually will know how we're gonna deploy these funds, and how much can we count on unknown, or how much should we factor in potential future economic development? It's easy to say, well, let's not count on it, 'cause it might not happen. That's true. But it might happen, and it might be something that factors into making these plans. So who, how and when do we know the impact of all these things that are kinda floating around? Because for me, it's gonna be hard to decide how to line it all up when we have all these potential things that are gonna change. So at some point, we have to decide how we're gonna deploy that money that we have, and, you know, how much to factor in, future economic development, things like that. That's, I guess, not a question, just sort of extreme of consciousness in terms of how I try to think about this stuff.
Well, Mayor, if I can, I do think there is a question in there, 'cause the policy decision and input from this esteemed body in front of me and council adoption, you know, some guidance, when council adopts their budget guidance on January 15th for water sale proceeds, would be helpful. You know, is it gonna be deployed in the current CIP, retained for a future big project, put in for a development fund, and we're just doing interest? Because when I present a proposed CIP on behalf of the city manager of the Planning Commission, it has to have a funding source associated with it. So staff will be making some recommendations, and it would be helpful to have it built on some policy guidance.
Thank you.
I think the good news is that we have some new things in the CIP planning, and I think that will help us with the process. I know it's a short window, and possibly it can be expanded somewhat. But I think it's really important to include the new things that we're gonna be doing, the open house and community needs, to find out what the community is looking for in our CIP. I mean, in the past, we've gotten staff recommendations, and that's all that we've really considered. Very rarely did we put something new into the CIP. But once we, once we start, I'm hoping that once we start doing these community input sessions, that we will get a clearer vision of what the community is looking for. Because what we're getting is a lot of complaints to different people. Everybody has a different complaint, and one's got sidewalks, one's got stormwater, whatever. And so once we start doing a list and getting priorities, and somebody's got some great ideas about how to do this, I think we'll have a better picture of how to proceed with CIP. And I'm really encouraged that we're gonna be doing some different things.
Thank you. Just following up on that, I think that is the intention, that this year we will seek, A, to get more information out to the public, because I think a lot of the things that happen are not really widely disseminated to folks in the community, and also get more information on what's proposed. And so they can help us prioritize what the needs are and what order and fashion that we can absorb them, pay for them, and the like. So I'm hoping this year will be a better-informed process for everyone, including ourselves. But anyway, thank you.
I think we learned this fall that we weren't telling our story very well. And, you know, really, the information is not getting out to the public. And I think that the ideas coming forth for the development process for the CIP is essential because it's so difficult to understand, it covers so many different areas, and we just don't come up with an idea overnight, you know, and say, I'm gonna do this. So the whole idea of really, I say, working very closely together, city council, school board, Planning Commission, and, you know, a lot of other community members, to really have a united story, as strong a story as we can have, and that vision, that's extremely important, and have that shared vision. So we're supporting each other, and not, I think, we are seen as combative. And I think we need to be really working together to get the best that we can get for our community and our schools.
Thank you. John?
Just a couple things. Getting back to the $840,000 in debt, that assumes all the proffers we have in hand now, and all the ones from the two projects that are getting built now, go toward Mount Daniel, and everything else is debt, right?
Yeah, that's correct. The assumption behind that is that we're planning to get a market for $10.4 million worth of debt for Mount Daniel. $4.2 million will be covered through proffers, which are payable in the spring of 2016.
Okay, but it doesn't close the door on using any water sale proceeds. It's just you're making that assumption right now that it's not being used.
That's true. And so our financial plan for Mount Daniel is debt will finance everything except for that which is covered by the proffers.
Okay. I think I'm confused. On one slide, you had a FY15 fund balance of, I think, $1.6 million. On another slide, you had a $1.3 million deficit for FY15. And it seems like that's a bit in conflict. So could you explain how that doesn't?
Yeah. So the deficit relates to, it's just, it's, in terms of how that budget was adopted, there are recurring expenditures in the budget that don't have recurring revenues associated with them. That's what needs to be solved with FY16 budget adoption.
Okay, so we didn't really have a deficit in 15?
No, we have a balanced budget, but it's balanced because we use one-time money, the FY14 surpluses, to balance it. And so that money won't come back again in 2016. So that's, that's the gap that needs to be closed.
Okay, I think the, I don't know if you can think of a better way to phrase it, but it's just, I think it's sort of innately confusing to say you've got what looks like a surplus at the end of 15, and at the same time, you're saying you had a deficit at the end of 15. So.
Basically, if I remember correctly, it was using fund balance to pay for the operating budget, with some of us.
Yeah, no, it just, it looks like you're saying you both had extra money and you owed money. That's my only.
Because it was out of fund balance, right? Wyatt, maybe, but that's where it was. He just used it out of fund balance, threw down fund balance, threw it into operating budget.
Right.
While maintaining the fund balance at policy.
Right. I think all he's saying is, maybe when you communicate to the public, there are different words to use to make it easier for them to understand what happened.
Yeah, understanding inside this room is different than, you know, everybody else understanding. So.
How about you use your savings account to pay for your operating budget while maintaining your policy?
That's a good start. We're still wearing that same belt. Same belt and suspenders. It's something similar on the library parking. And obviously, I'm biased, I'm a huge fan of the library, but when I first looked at this, it said, you know, $3 million for parking, which is for the entire parking, correct? And there were 55, but it says 55 new spaces. And the first thing I did was I did the math, and I thought, we're paying $54,000 per space for above-ground parking, that's ridiculous. But it's not. You're probably getting at least twice that, because you're assuming the layer that's already there stays, and then you build on top. So I would just say how many spaces you're getting, and then say you're getting 55 new, just so it doesn't look like you're paying a ridiculous amount for above-ground parking. That's all. Because it makes it look horrible. And we've got enough real problems without making our own problems.
But parking is ridiculously expensive.
It is, but even underground parking isn't that expensive.
That comes out to $55,000 a parking space, which is about twice what you would expect. So people who are in the never-hitting seat yet.
More than twice. That's all.
More than twice.
So we're getting twice as many. We're not getting 55 spaces for $3 million. We're probably getting 120 spaces, but only 55 new.
Yeah, it's 115 with both layers, but you have the new deck of 55. So the slide said new, but it didn't clarify it as much, so people don't do the math that way. We can talk about, revise that.
I'll go about two slides. I think it's slide number 20 and 21. Why, you said, oh, just so, we went to, we have a referendum, $15.6 million, and this shows 10.4. Is it just me or am I missing a million? They only said you got 4.2 in the proffers.
We've already funded the million.
Yeah, we had already funded the million in 2013.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the missing million.
And then on the school debt, especially the 2005 and 2006 outstanding, this bond out there, any possibility we could do some refunding or to save some interest rates? I'm seeing a lot of that in the marketplace where 2005s and where rates were higher, are being refinanced now. So I was just wondering if we could, if there's a potential to do any of those.
We've, we did refund the Mary Ellen Henderson debt, and we've, we've been pretty aggressive when interest rates fell, refunding our debt and refinancing.
Okay. All right, so that's exhausted, is what I'm hearing.
Yes. Okay. Good luck.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure how to bring these, some of these disparate ideas together. I think the key may be some modification of what the steering committee is trying to do. I think in some ways, the steering committee might be more than it's currently doing in terms of trying to look at not just the GM, MEH process, but at more the total process of what we're talking about here tonight, and trying to sketch out the dates when particular points of decision need to be made. And those decisions will bring things together. I think Andy was talking about the how and the when of these things, of when, you know, when the different streams of money become available to us. I don't, I don't think it's entirely clear to everyone here, it's not entirely clear to me at least, as to when the money begins to flow from a new project. Does it begin to flow at the point where the contract is initially signed? Does it begin to flow when the, when there's a, an opening of the project to the public? Or is there some, is it someplace in between there that money begins to flow? And are there, are there different money flows along the way? I think, I think being able to understand when those are taking place, looking back at existing projects, I think we can get a better handle on, on when those points occur, and we can project them out into, into projects to come. So I'd like to encourage the steering committee to take on additional review of how these things get decided, and not just the GM, MEH, but the, but the overall process. And for the short run, one of the things I understand we're gonna be seeing come to us, come in our decisions, particularly for Mount Daniel, is that some people are gonna propose to us that we go ahead and fund the lead Sillner certification. We haven't budgeted that in our CIP at this point. We haven't budgeted that in our CIP at this point. And there's a question of, okay, well, should the city council allocate money to do that? Should the school board find a way to do it? Should we use a provision in the contract that says that we can, we can direct the contractor to do a LEED Silver, but we have to find a way to pay for it? And it might be in the, the way that we are looking at the guaranteed maximum price, which is, which is only under the contract and not under the referendum. As we look at the guaranteed maximum price, we may allow for building the LEED Silver certification into that guaranteed maximum price. And so, that, you know, those are things that, that the steering committee could say, "Yes, we need you to reach that decision and here's a couple of steps in the process that school board, city council, here are some, some points that you need to, to get past to determine, okay, who's going to pay for that?" And pick out, you know, when in the, in the two different calendars that we have here, when are those determinations going to have to be made? There are a couple of other, you know, more, more details of what our vision is, of what kind of things we want to actually have in the future. I think our LEED Silver is not just for this project, but LEED is, is for any of the projects we're talking about, at least those that involve, involve buildings. There are, there are fields that we're looking at and I have real question marks about, okay, how many fields, where, and then what should their surfaces be like? Should they be artificial turf? Or should they not? In some cases, they probably should, in some cases, some cases not. I don't think we've looked as thoroughly at that as we should. If it's, if it's a good thing to have the artificial turf on one field, why not the others? And I think, I think there are, there are decision points that we need to get to, to make those determinations. Lastly, is the, the operating diet for, for the schools and, and for the city. And I think, again, the steering committee could help define where in the decision-making process we need to, to come to that. But I, I for one, would like to see both bodies have a better grip on finding a way to, to express that, yes, we're going to engage in a diet as, as we did for a five-year period with the Mary Ellen Henderson project. It's not, it's not something that we haven't done before. It's, it's a matter of plotting out the, the elements of the, the expenses that we expect to, to incur and realistically determining what, what we, what we need to do and what we can afford to do. Again, that, that goes back to what Andy was talking about before, of having a realistic understanding of the how and when the money flows, when it needs to be committed. And it's, it's really complicated over a five-year period, but I think over a, over a one- or two-year period, it's less, less so. And I think, again, we can, we can begin to do this, this year, with this fiscal year '16 budget. We don't have to push this off for, for a much longer time period. So, I'd like to see us get, get going on a, a modified assignment for the steering committee and a, an intensified commitment for us to operating budget plan.
Thank you. Other comments?
I have a couple of comments and questions. The first is, on slide 23, it talks about the, the high school essentially being 105 million dollars. Is that the number that we're using right now?
That would be combining the high school and the Mary Ellen Henderson expansion in the adopted CIP, which was 5 million and 99.5, so I rounded it up.
So, so, the high school's roughly 100 million?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Mary Ellen Henderson's expansion's 5 million.
So, in years past, the way the CIP has worked when it comes to the planning commission is the first couple of years, we've really focused on, and then there's this placeholder that lists 100 million dollars out, you know, three, four years in the future, and that actually has kept shifting. That appears from the following slide that that's now going to shift to 2019. So, my question is really, how is this going to be presented to the planning commission and to the public at large? If it's presented in the way that it has been in the past, where it's got a big placeholder of 100 million dollars, I think that that's going to be not only a huge problem for me, but for the public as a whole. This is a number that's just unworkable for anybody trying to do any sort of planning when you have 100 million dollars. And some of that has to do with just the way that the CIP is developed. But it's also not reality based on even the figures presented here in slide 24. And so, my question really is, how is it going to be presented? So, there's some assumption here that 50% of that's going to be covered by assisted economic development. So, are we going to see a number that's 50 million? But when I look at the math on the following chart, it looks like, I guess, including interest, it's closer to 80 million dollars, amortized over 20 years. So, one, what number are we going to see? And two, if we're going to present a number that's similar to 100 million or 80 million, that, that presentation really needs to be thought through carefully. Because while the planning commission has seen this consistently, if you're really going to make an effort to bring this out to the public, I think you're going to have a really difficult time explaining that to someone who's not sitting through the hours of meetings that we are. And the second thing, I've heard a lot in going around the room about getting a cooperative vision and reaching out to the public. And I, of course, love the idea of reaching out to the public and that's an important step. But the CIP system, the CIP process, the way it has worked in the past, doesn't really allow for that input to be factored into the numbers. Traditionally, over the last six years that I've been doing this, there's a very tight debt ratio band that we have to work with. These big projects always inevitably, because we have all these things that we've had to do or have pushed until now, bring us up to this band where we can hardly maneuver. Where the planning, the commission is often constricted greatly in where we can maneuver. In fact, the last year was the first time in, in that six years where we had any ability to have any decision-making of consequence. Because in previous years, we had been under this austerity plan and the, and the overall budget was reduced, so we couldn't move. Last year, we could move a little bit. We got some proposals like the library, where we even said, "Look, we need to get some additional input from the public." But if everyone's serious about reaching out to the public, the CIP process needs to have a little flexibility in it. There needs to be areas in there that, that allow for investment, that allow for the input of the public to be factored in. It's not just about what programs you want to cut and how you want to spend the money. It's also about investment. There are, for years and years and years, we've been told, "We need to make investment in this community." And every year, when we get to the CIP, we have no ability to make those investments. And these are ideas that, they don't come up overnight, but they're not things that we haven't heard before. We've heard ideas about parking garages and we've heard ideas about updating the streetscape on South Washington Street. We've heard about now Maple Avenue potentially being renovated in some way to help with a new farmer's market or, or just economic development in general. I mean, that came up at this meeting alone. The CIP as it's currently structured has no room in it for those ideas. And the public undoubtedly will have new ones and more interesting ones that we can consider. And so, I think that there needs to be some money, because we're dealing within bands, we're not dealing with absolute figures when it comes to this stuff, there needs to be some money that says, "Investment ideas." The city needs to make investment. We are not rolling in money contrary to all the new projects that we seem to be wanting to invest in, but there needs to be some, some process, some, some area in the process to listen to the public input, not just, not just hear it, but actually incorporate it to the CIP. And some of those things, I hope, from the public will be investments that are not currently on this list. Things that we've heard about that needs to happen for the city to grow and for the economic development to grow. So, I hope we can change it in some small way. It has definitely improved over the last six years, but if you really are serious about reaching out to the public, this process has to be altered so that their opinions can be heard.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have something that Russ said. Why, I want to make sure I understand slide 25. So, are you saying that now our CIP load amounts to 14 cents on the tax rate? Is that, is that where we are today?
Yes.
Okay. And projected out, you said, it would be 30, let's say 30 cents once we factor in pension investment, 30 cents?
Right.
Tax rate. And is that an FY, can't even read, 38? Is that an FY 38?
No, sooner than not, unfortunately. It's FY 19, I believe.
Okay, okay. So, as soon as FY 19. And, and that then is 16 cents, right? 14 now, 30 then. So, 16 cents is, is the delta, like?
I see.
Okay. So, 16 cents on the tax rate, 355,000 times 16 is about 6 million dollars. So, we need to make 6 million dollars somehow, right? If we're going to close that gap without increasing the tax rate. So, what we need to go to Mr. Rankin's point to do is get about the business, and we are in this business in the smaller area planning, of figuring out how we're going to do roughly a half dozen, five, if you count Mason Row, is done, but let's say six, 6 million dollar projects. Harris Teeters a million, three, Lincoln's 960. So, you're talking about about a half dozen projects of the scale of the ones that are coming up out of the ground now, somewhere in the city, over the next, you know, you don't have to do them all tomorrow and you don't have to do them all by 2019, but somewhere over the next 10 or 12 years. And then finally, in addition, Wyatt, your, your numbers assume that you're making 50 million out of the West End metro land. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. So, you have to do the West End and you have to do six projects about like the ones that we have recently approved. And that would enable you to pay for all the things that we want at a tax rate that's roughly equivalent to today's. And the last one I wanted to make is, if you look at your chart, it goes out to 2038 and it's already 2016, right? So, that's 22 years. I remember when the last library renovation was done, I think Tyler, my son, was, he was just born. And he's only 21 years old now. And for at least half his life, we've been talking about how we need to do the library. And that's just by way of saying that whatever we decide to do in the next few months, and I hope we decide to do these things in the next few months, City Hall and the library, we, we need to try to think about making these projects, investing in them in a way that will enable them to last longer than, you know, 10 or 11 years. So that, you know, it's not until 2038 that the people who are sitting in this room then will really begin to need to talk about, gee, what are we going to do about the library? We're going to have to build a new one.
Okay, Mr. Baruch and then Ms. Oliver.
Just, I wanted to come back to a point that, that Mr. Sharp made about sort of the need to get on with, if we're going to do a diet or whatever we're going to call it, get moving on that, whatever the process is for that. And I just wanted to voice that I absolutely agree with that. And I think, looking at the budget calendar, there's sort of a disconnect with that. Because right now, we've got council adopting budget guidance on January 12th, even the superintendent the next day presenting the budget to the school board. So...
Doesn't make sense.
That, that makes no sense of what we're going to have these discussions, how that's going to happen in a day. So, I think this budget calendar, I mean, if, if the sense of the group is that we actually want to have these discussions earlier, this doesn't work with this calendar unless the council adopts some budget guidance sooner than later. And that's why I propose that we got to start putting our cards on the table of where we're at with the policy position. So, and that's why I threw out the discussion about, you know, this is my thinking. I think we need to start thinking about how are we going to tackle the CIP and then we need to have a discussion about doing an operating budget diet. And I know that Mr. Sharp has talked about that. It's not a term that I coined. It was one that Mr. Sharp some time ago brought to my attention. But I think we need to have those discussions sooner than later.
Well, I'll just say, I think it's infeasible for either the 20 of us around this corte or 14 council and school board to, to set the steps out that are going to help us get there. But I think the steering committee has more of a reasonable likelihood of, of, of being able to accomplish that.
That's just in relation to what, the high school? Can you get the high school at the right place?
So, I, just my perspective on it is I think that the school board needs to have a discussion about its interest in that conversation. We haven't yet. And our meeting next Tuesday, we'll be talking about guidance with superintendents, and that would be in time to do that. City council can certainly have that discussion. I think that Gang of Eight is probably more the right venue to bring those two discussions together, see what the board of school board is thinking, city council's thinking, and, you know, do we, don't we, timing, you know, processes, and so on. That, that seems to make the most sense to me at least, is that group. Because that group is the one that's really charged with kind of cross-body communication work.
Oh, we'd certainly try to put together a meeting, the Gang of Eight, as soon as possible. If there's a will to do that, I'd be delighted to try to facilitate a, a meeting coming up in the near future to be able to have that discussion sooner as possible.
I would certainly support.
I agree.
Okay. Well, why don't we try to put something together maybe in the next week or so?
It would need to be after our school board meeting next Tuesday. That's one of the chances of word to, to talk. And I can bring the consensus of the board to that meeting. So, maybe Wyatt, until you can try to find a date, and that's your favorite thing, to try to find dates.
It is hard. Why, what are we projecting inflation at, or CPI, or whatever our escalator measure is?
I don't have a projection for that. What I can get out and distribute is what it has been for the last year. And, and there might be regional forecasts for that. I think the Stephen Fuller presentation that was given to the Senate Finance Committee does have a projection.
Okay, unless there are any other? Okay, two more comments. Last, last words.
Mr. Shields, on slides 23 and 24, one of the things, takes a little while for the question, it's like, wait up, there'll be people in the audience that will be faster than I am and will come up with this sooner. But ULI TAP projects that 50% of a high school could be paid for through economic development, but you don't say when. And then when you look at the debt service projection, it has been our custom to finance, to take the whole bond out, even if the money is being spent over two, three, four years. But if we're looking at a chunk of 100 million and we possibly looking at a chunk of funds coming in, but not immediately, the timing is very critical and the, and we may need to change the policy. Maybe we don't take all 100 million out if we don't have the economic development. I don't know what the timing is. I don't know how fast you spend. But that's, that question will come up, the timing of those, of those two aspects.
Yeah, and I think Chair Carney, Carney wants to speak to this as well, but I will just, you put your finger on a key point that the ULI TAP made, which is, the timing is out of sync. Under a standard way to do this, the economic development comes online five years, maybe 10 years after you've got the debt service online. And so, they talked about having to bridge that, that period of time, and so you need capital reserves in hand to do that. We may need to explore other options for doing, for figuring that piece of it out. But it kind of gets to this point where that's such a big problem that in this presentation, I can't really even deal with it. It's something that I think is right at the fore of what the steering committee will be working through over the coming six months.
But I think that if there is bridge financing required, it needs to show on this graph.
So, can I just make a comment? I know, we've had a lot of conversation about this in the steering committee. So, the ULI TAP study was a wonderful piece of work, completed in 36 hours in our city. And so, I, I think is it...
And so I, I think as a leader in this community, we need to understand that that was, that one group's perception after 36 hours of work about what might happen, when it might happen, and what monies might flow from it. At the end of the day, it may be completely different from that. And so, it really should be considered as kind of an example of, here's a thing that might be the case, and very conceptual. And so, one of the things that the steering committee is going to be wrestling with is, now we have the answer to two questions. One, a smaller footprint for our schools works. Two, there's land left over that can be developed commercially, and could be quite lucrative. And that's pretty much all we really know now. And the next steps are, how do we get community input, and then how do we, how do we go to the development community and others to get proposals that would be very specific about what the money is and what the timing is? So you're right, but people are going to ask questions about that, but I, it's going to be challenging for us all, but I think to the extent that we help people in the community understand, this is conceptual information that was generated over 36 hours, it's not what's going to necessarily happen, or when it's going to happen, that will be beneficial, because the more they get in their heads in more details, the more difficult it's going to be when what happens is completely something else.
I, I agree, but then, that chart that shows the debt service should show 100 million, not 50 million, as scary as that is. Because on slide 25, we have the little line that shows us, you know, how the pension fund will help mitigate that partially. Well, maybe the slide 25 will show the pension fund and whatever financing scenarios, economic development scenarios we have. But it's deceptive to put that 50% number in there.
I'm not saying it's not, and I'm not going to recommend the city manager help you communicate this, I just wanted to be sure that in every public kind of forum I'm in these days, I have to kind of say, that was one group's opinion, generated over a small amount of time, based on limited information, they're experts and super smart, and they've told us there's valuable kind of gold in their hands, but it's, it could be really different what actually happened. So I think you're right, communicating, it needs to be very carefully done.
From a CIP point of view, Mr. Riddick, because I know one thing, is that having that 100 million dollar placeholder, no matter how far out it goes, was a big, it's a big constraint on the CIP, because even though we may have current funds that we can add, we can't do it because we're, we know out here, we're going to go way over our limits with that 100 million. So it's, so in a way, you could have the 50 million dollar placeholder, or you could have the 100 million, either way, it totally constrains the CIP to the future, because both numbers are almost too big to fit in there. And, and so it's just, I, my big issue is, I, I don't, I think, and FY 2019 doesn't really make sense, I, I don't see how we're possibly going to be ready at that point. But, I mean, that's something the steering committee also has to figure out.
Okay, thank you. Last word, Ms. Connelly.
Last word is just a scheduling thing, and that is, I'm wondering if any of these town hall meetings could be held on a Sunday afternoon?
Right.
We've had, there've been some good forums recently on Sundays that got really good attendance. This meeting had about 65 people, and Biggie Women voters had 30 or so.
Just to be careful, serve refreshments. Refreshments, refreshments.
So we can serve refreshments.
It is always good.
But I'm just wondering if there's a way to switch one to a Sunday, or add one on a Sunday.
All right, thank you all for coming out tonight, we appreciate it, I think it's great to get us all in the same room. And we've got a lot of hard work to do, a lot of tough budget decisions I think to be making coming up here, but hopefully we can work collaboratively, get the job done. Thank you all for coming.